All right. The regular meeting of the Board of Education for June 20th is called to order. Welcome everyone present. Any item that we voted on this evening has been posted by state law. Director Constam is absent this evening and Director Buell is joining us by phone. Ms. Houston, is there any student testimony?
Yes, we have three. And our first two speakers Hazel Curly O'Malley and Moses Tran.
Good evening, PPS Board. My name is Hazel Curly O'Malley and I will be in Benson's class of 2020. I've been heavily involved in Benson's community for the majority of my life because my dad is a teacher at Benson. I marched as an eight-year-old in 2010 to save Benson from being closed. I marched as a 12-year-old in 2014 to save Benson's sports. Here I am now, a 15-year-old, and now a Benson student, marching once again to protest a decision that would disproportionately affect the students at my school. I've, uh, I've just finished my freshman year at Benson. I played soccer and I did track. I'm hoping to participate in more athletics during my time at Benson. Sports were a crucial part of my freshman year. Because Benson is not a neighborhood school, people don't know one another when they walk through the doors on their first day. Sports are how we sculpt our community. Take away or limit sports, we lose the most important way to form our family. Cutting sports from Benson would force our student athletes to make a big decision. A, move to a school that has athletics, or B, somehow travel every day to your neighborhood school for after-school practices. I have no intention of leaving my school. Therefore, would I have to travel an hour to Roosevelt for practice, likely missing a huge portion of my last period classes if I hope to make it on time to practice? What am I supposed to do? How is it at all equitable? Three times in the last seven years, Benson and its community has been targeted by PPS. This is why I'm here today. Why? Why is it in any way equitable to target one school over and over again? Despite many attempts to limit and diminish our programs, we are still a school that works. The most diverse school in the district, home to one of the highest graduation rates in the district. The job of a school administration should be to build and grow schools, not weaken or tear them down. You are here to serve us students and to ensure that we have all the opportunities for a complete and rich high school experience. I hope that you, the Board, and Marshall Haskins understand the overwhelming effect cutting our sports would have, and I ask you, why would you consider this? And how is this at all equitable? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Moses Tran and I am a junior at Benson High School. I offer my remarks as another voice the Board should consider before making an inequitable decision that would adversely impact the students, staff, and all who are part of the Benson community. It is absurd to ask students to travel another 30 to 45 minutes after school to participate in sports in addition to their morning and afternoon commutes. They can already take anywhere from 45 minutes to two hours. Practices will be required to start later and end later, forcing students to take public transportation late at night. Benson is one of the most diverse schools in the district and serves a large number of minority students, who know that in the current political climate, traveling on public transportation poses a greater threat than it previously did. The students at Benson High School are hardworking, just like their parents, who are often working overtime, two or sometimes three jobs, and many struggle to find sustainable employment. These families do not have the luxury to pick up their child after practice or have the money to pay for the additional support to maintain their child's grades. Cutting Benson athletics not only poses a threat to the safety of our students, but their education. Our students will be forced to stay up later in order to keep up with their academics. They will have to wake up earlier than your average neighborhood school student in order to arrive to school on time. Tired, weary, and stressed, we cannot fathom what our students have to go through beyond these examples, whether it be a job, personal matter, family issues, and many more. So now I ask the Board, how can cutting Benson athletics be considered an equitable decision when it has set up our student athletes and more so our students of color to fail? I am not asking, but demanding the Board reconsider the proposed cuts to Benson athletics in the budget, because sports are more than just a game, but an outlet and an opportunity for our students.
Next, we have Sarah Furness.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Furness and I am the current ASP co-president along with Enrique Tayez at Benson. I am strongly against this proposal for the cut in our sports. I have been informed that this is not the first time that this Board has considered cutting Benson athletics. We as a Benson community are strong and will go to great lengths in order to keep the sports at our school. Sports have a strong influence in a student's high school experience. I myself, as a student, have participated in soccer and track, and I would not be where I am today without it. Sports has relieved me from my stress and kept me on top of my schoolwork, but most importantly, has built me into the leader I am today and helped how I understand the concept of teamwork. I am able to take the teamwork skills I've learned and use them in the classroom with my peers and better more be a leader in the classroom and on the field. Sports keep kids engaged and happy at school and threatening that is just unfair and cruel. That's all.
Thank you.
So, I just want to say how happy I am to see all of you here tonight. Sports was always important to me and this was before Title IX, when I did sports in high school. And, you know, this is, it's an interesting dilemma we have. It's a problem, and we need everyone to help us find solutions. Benson has smaller teams, sometimes that's not safe. Sometimes, thank you. They do, you're right. Sometimes it's safety issue, sometimes it's just a competitive issue. So, this is an ongoing, if you would let me finish, thank you. This is an ongoing conversation. There have been no decisions made on this, and I think that it's really important that you continue to be actively involved in the discussion. So make sure that you pay attention, make sure you know when those meetings are, and continue to be a part of the solution, which is what I think you guys are doing tonight. So I really appreciate you being here. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Bob, you want to say?
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to thank, is my microphone on? I can't tell. Can you all hear me? Yeah. I want to thank you for being here and I want to especially acknowledge the courtesies that you're, I mean, I've been watching and I know that that's a real serious attempt and I appreciate it. I think that says a lot for you and certainly the students. I do want to share with you that a memo did go out this afternoon to the Benson community, and it reads essentially, "You may have heard rumors that the sports program at Benson and Jefferson High Schools are possibly being cut. This is not true. The issue is not the agenda for tonight's board meeting and the vote is not scheduled. While it is true the District has taken a look at the programs at these schools with the goal of creating opportunities for students to participate in athletics, there has not been a recommendation made to the District on how to move forward. There are no changes planned to the inter-scholastic sports program of Benson and Jefferson at this time. There is an ongoing process to evaluate these programs. When the District moves closer to a decision in the coming months, the public will have opportunities to input, and I encourage you to do so. I too am a believer in athletic programs and extracurricular activities, I believe everybody up here is. We recognize it makes a huge difference in the lives of kids." So, that's the message I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Houston, any public comment?
Yes, we have six. Our first two speakers, Melinda Samas and Steve Dyer.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and begin.
All right. Great. I am the Executive Director of Andeo, which is a local organization established in 1981 that works to facilitate cross-cultural friendship and understanding through international immersion and language programs. I was at the board meeting last week and was moved by what Julio Hernandez and Hannah Curtis had to say when they received their seals of biliteracy. It was a bittersweet moment because at the same meeting Noel Jackson spoke of the sadness many parents and students have in the grant community about French being phased out of their school. Noel Jackson mentioned a change.org petition last week, and we'd like to present it to you today. We've collected more than 1,400 signatures and 600 comments, most of them local, in support of preserving the French program at Grant. Our aim in initiating this petition was to demonstrate broad support in our community for retaining existing language options in the schools. This budget that you've adopted contains several stated priorities to guide decision-making, and two of those include learning and achievement and educational equity. What emerged in the petition comments is that many community members consider language options to be directly related to learning and achievement and should be considered part of the district's core academic programming. Additionally, the narrowing of language options at schools in some areas of the district but not others creates educational inequity. In other words, decreasing language options decreases opportunities for learning and achievement. We heard from alumni in our petition comments who wrote that the French program at Grant opened doors to their career and educational opportunities. We heard from devastated students who say that the French program at Grant brings them joy. We heard from concerned parents who are considering pulling their kids out of Grant next year and sending them to schools that do offer French. We heard from community members who expressed dismay that the opportunities for global learning are being decreased at the same time that the United States has stepped away from longstanding treaties and alliances. And you can see some of those comments, all of those comments in your folders there. We strongly believe that robust language programs benefit not only the students at school, but the greater community as well. Many petition signers mentioned how much they value citizens who are able to communicate across cultures and understand issues from a global context. Some students grow up speaking more than one language, but most of us need to learn languages at school. As one petition signer wrote, "Study of another language goes beyond words. It encompasses the humanity of another people's culture. What the United States needs in particular is world citizens who can interact in a meaningful way with people from other countries."
Go ahead.
I'll skip, oh, go ahead. Okay, I don't have too much longer. Languages teach words, but they also teach culture, diplomacy, and a worldview. The more language programs a school offers, the more opportunities there are for students to share ideas and perspectives with one another. We'd love to see the number of students being awarded the seal of biliteracy increase, not decrease. Moving forward, we urge you to include language programs within your definition of core academic programs that should be protected in the next round of cuts and prioritized for reinstatement if the District receives additional funding from Salem. We intend to continue the discussion. Language diversity in our schools is too important to be phased out. In the meantime, we are going to work with other organizations who have a vested interest in languages to initiate a fundraiser to keep this longstanding and much-loved French program available to students at Grant next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar and Steve Curley.
Good evening, Dr. McCain and PPS Board of Education. All too often, changes happen to us. To circumvent any potential changes, my family lives in the Jefferson High School Cluster Boundary. Jefferson Demos pride runs deep. Once a demo, always a demo. My kids have always known they are demos. When the PIL Middle Grades Program is brought back for the Jefferson Cluster Middle School Students, my kids jumped to this opportunity. My oldest son spent three years on the Jefferson PIL Track and Field Team and he is now a student at Jefferson High School. My daughter is entering her third year in the Jefferson PIL Track and Field Team and will be entering Jefferson in the 2018 school year. With dance training from the amazing Mr. Damon at Oakley Green Middle School, a former Jefferson dancer himself, my daughter aspires to be a future Jefferson dancer. Like many families that came before us, are now, and will be in the future, we are demos proud. Our youngest will be entering Jefferson in 2023. Jefferson High School Students have weathered too many inequities over the years, from potential school closures to small school experiments. The Middle College for Advanced Studies, the SEI Partnership, and the PIL Sports brought back to the Jefferson Cluster Middle School Students were a series of appropriate needed investments into Jefferson after decades of inequities. The basketball team won the state championship. The Jefferson dancers continue to perform to perfection, and the Middle College has opened doors for many students whom are the first in their families to go to college. There is literally something for everyone, a connection, a trusted mentor, access to rigorous curriculum, the collaboration and team building from athletics, pride, and many more opportunities for our Jefferson High School Students that I have not listed here. The impact of these investments at Jefferson is measurable with an 84% graduation rate. Students thrive when they are provided a culturally responsive environment with programming that connects to who they are and what their needs are. Too often in PPS, our students not have meaningful opportunities to be a part of their school community. Jefferson High School is and always has been a neighborhood high school. Audit after audit has espoused the importance, the significance of Jefferson to the North Portland community. The District has continued to refer to the Jefferson Cluster after the high school redesign, and by now we are all too familiar with the Jefferson Cluster remount balancing from 2012, 2013. There is great fear in our community that there is an attempt by PPS to remove the neighborhood designation from Jefferson High School, to reconfigure it to a focus option only, and to close the Jefferson High School Neighborhood School. This would not be equity. This would go directly against the racial educational equity policy adopted by the PPS Board of Education in 2011. We have an aspiring demos now in the Jefferson Cluster, students that are involved in football, basketball, track and field, that deserve to have equitable access to athletics at their high school. Athletics can make all the difference for students finding their people and their community in their school. Please continue to invest in high school athletics in all PPS high schools. For many of our historically underserved students, access to any program is only accessible when it is at their school they attend. Thank you.
Thank you. As a Benson teacher and a parent of a Benson student, I'm proud to speak on behalf of the Benson community. But first, I want to start with some recent history, just in case we look a little hysterical showing up here tonight. In the early 2000s, Vicky Phillips' disastrous school choice plan destabilized all of Portland's majority non-white schools, including Benson, and pitted them against each other for enrollment. In 2010, PPS proposed to close Benson during the redesign. While we resisted and prevented this, the District capped enrollment, leaving us 400 students short of the ideal number of students as defined by the District. I would like to give some respect to the Marshall community and the kids of Southeast Portland who are much less fortunate. In 2013, Benson's then-principal Carol Campbell was reassigned to Grant. In an emotional July meeting in the Benson Library, head of high school Tripp Goodall promised that if it took a nationwide search to find the best CTE principal available, he would do it. Instead, Benson was assigned the vice-principal from Grant. With all due respect to Curtis, in that moment, the Benson community was shocked at the casualness with which the District seemed to value one school and one group of students over another. In the spring of 2014, PPS proposed to cut sports at Benson. This plan was abandoned after community outcry, yet scores of eighth graders who had accepted their spots at Benson decided to stay away. Again, the damage was done. So here we go again. I remind you of these moments to lend context to our cause and to illustrate why we are here today and why we will be here tomorrow. History breeds suspicion. Each of the events listed led to lower enrollment, fewer teachers, limited course offerings, and since some seemed to care, less competitive sports. Uncertainty caused students to bail in 2010, eighth graders cut and run in 2014, and the same will happen this fall when and if this proposal is finally allowed to see the light of day. Over the years, talented colleagues have left for jobs at Franklin, Grant, and Cleveland because no matter how badly PPS wants us to believe they are focusing on the needs of North and Northeast High Schools, it's these other schools that have remained stable. Now, today, the results of PPS years of meddling is being used against Benson as evidence that more cuts need to be made. You're too small. You're not competitive enough. Well, PPS, you made us that way. You'll be interested to know that in 11 years since I've worked at Benson, there's never been a single play performed in our beautiful auditorium. There has not been a note of music played in a classroom since music was cut eight years ago. We've learned the hard way that once something is gone, it almost never comes back. Kids accept that there are trade-offs when you choose Benson, but nowhere in that contract does it say you should accept less. As I was reminded by my friend John last night, separate is not equal, and if we begin to accept less, then less is what we'll get. So here we are, in our three- or four-year cycle, to drag another iffy plan into the light. Why does this keep happening to the most diverse school in the whitest city in America? We want this plan aired publicly and with community input to be taken up by the School Board and ultimately to be rejected. We ask that nothing be implemented until this happens. Thanks for your time. Go Tech.
As a concerned citizen and active member of the Benson community, I am appalled and disgusted by Marshall Haskins' gutless decision to cut the majority of sports programs at our school. This is not just a spineless attack on our sports community, but a slap in the face to each and every one of our past, present, and future Benson students. Sports play a pivotal role in these kids' lives. Benson is not a neighborhood school, which means that many of our kids come here not knowing anybody. So, so many of our kids make lasting friendships through the different teams offered at Benson. Countless times, I've seen shy and timid freshmen join a team at the start of the year and find their family, people that care about them, people that support them, whether they be teammates or coaches. But most of all, our students grow as individuals, learning countless life lessons and finding a home at our school. To cut any of our programs and deny students the opportunity to express themselves and connect with their teachers and fellow students on an athletic level is repulsive, bigoted, and plainly irresponsible. Over the last decade or so, it appears that Benson is attacked more and more, whether it be with threats of school closures, to lack of funding, to deplorable decisions like this one, even though Benson has the third-highest graduation rate in the district, within only a couple of percentage points away from Lincoln, which for some reason never seems to get any of these cuts. I know how important school sports are because I benefited from them firsthand. Growing up on the border of Compton and Long Beach, California, sports provided me an outlet that kept me and many of the kids in my neighborhood out of trouble. Club sports were out of the question due to the lack of access, financial instability in my home, and lack of transportation. Through the free sports teams that were provided by my district, I was able to find a purpose to go to school, a reason to do well in classes, and a reason to think about my future and what success actually means. Not the final scoreboard, but becoming a better person. Cutting programs because you deem them uncompetitive reinforces the notion that students should give up instead of persevering. It's a proven fact that sports programs keep kids out of dangerous situations, so the notion that this District would even think about eliminating these programs without any input from students, parents, or staff shows me that they truly don't care about our kids. They don't see them as individuals, they see them as burdensome. PPS loves patting itself on the back for all of its equity work, but then wants to strip access to opportunities from one of the most diverse schools in the state. Add this to the poorly managed lead situation and the horrible management of our teachers' contracts, and you have to wonder what the District's motives actually are. Are they that incompetent, or are their intentions that malicious? I'll echo Malcolm X when I say that I have more respect for someone who shows me who they really are, even if they're wrong, than a man who presents himself as an angel when he isn't anything but a damn devil. So with the future of all of the Benson community in mind, I ask for the immediate resignation of Marshall Haskins and anybody who is responsible for any of these instances that were mentioned previously, so that somebody who actually cares about our kids can step in and do what's best for them.
I am the women's head basketball coach at PCC, class of 1994 here at Benson High School. I spent 12 years coaching high school football here at Benson and mentoring, the mentoring program and recruiting program here at Benson. My wife taught for nine years at Benson High School. Why are we here? We are here today because PIL Athletic Director Marshall Haskins and PPS have absurd and blatant malicious ideas fallen dead, and proposals that cut sports at Benson High School. Why does our community need to remind the District that backdoor deals will not fly and that snakes in the grass will continue to hide, but we will not continue to sit by and allow the District to deny our students access to an equitable, free education? Why do we need to continue to defend our programs and validate our worth while trying to work within this District as a worthwhile, functioning school? Weren't we here three years ago? Yes. Why do we need to gather and march? Well, because every four to six to eight years, we have to combat the District and you, the School Board, because of rogue officials, corrupt District employees, and biased superintendents and Board members who don't know, don't show, or don't care about what's going on at BHS. Regardless of our spineless administration excluding Barry Phillips, our students continue to prosper, and that is what we are about, the students. Shouldn't this be about the students? The students are here. The students and their ability to have an access, full-fledged, holistic high school education, and sports, that is a big part of it. Just like all other schools in this District, building teams and competition is an obstacle, but that is out of our control and is not, that is no bearing to the root of this evil. What happened to all the recommendations from the high school redesign? What happened to three years ago when we marched to save our sports? Well, maybe gone with the old superintendent, maybe, but what is not gone is our spirit to gather, to fight, and be heard. But we will not just be heard, we will work to make a change, a change for the better, a better District with directors and supers who are held accountable and will reprimand when needed. Why are we back here and why won't the District just leave us alone? Why? Because there are still individuals and groups within this District who hate and continue to poke at my community and my alma mater. There are still people in this District who want to see Benson shut down. Marshall Haskins continues to berate our school with ridiculous proposals and asinine ideas that oppress and deny availability and opportunity for our student athletes. It is the students' right of passage to be able to play sports with their peers. R-I-T-E. Fact. Our students want what they have been given for over 100 years, and that is the ability to go to Benson High School, and just like all the other students across this District. Period. They want to be at Benson. And yes, they want to play sports too, not at their neighborhood school, but at Benson. So in response to this continued threats and proposals and floating ideas that continue to hinder our school's ability to function as a magnet school, we, the community at Benson High School, will be filing a civil lawsuit against Portland Public School District. The continued harassment has got to stop. PPS has got to allow the PIL Athletic Office to run wild, carefree, without proper sanctions or authority. That is ridiculous. Schools' interest, involvement, and application will go down even in the hint of accusation or false ones. This lawsuit will serve as opposition to the class's oppression, and it would deliver an exclamation to the City of Portland that we care about our school, our kids, our community here and abroad. There is no other school like Benson High School in the nation. So, off the eve of this centennial celebration and in the midst of a sporting calendar, I please ask you to review my old proposed trades and possible waivers to get Curtis Wilson out of Benson High School. Give us a new principal, Benson Tech. Go!
All right.
That's it.
All right. Bob?
I'm not responding to anything. I'm just going ahead with my report. Yeah, and I'm, first thing. Okay, what I'd like to do is I'd like to start by recognizing some people that have been in the District for a very long time. We have Harriet, Dr. Harriet Adair. Are you back there, Harriet? Would you please step forward if you are? And Lorenzo Poe, would the two of you step forward?
If I'd known I was giving call forward, I would've worn louder tennis shoes.
I would just like to say a few words about these stellar individuals because this is their last formal full board meeting. Let me start with Lorenzo. Lorenzo's been with us for a while as a member of the school district, but he's been in the community forever. He is such an architect of the equity policy and is actually known at this point nationally for his work. On a personal level, he's been a terrific advisor to me during this interim year, and I just, I would like us to give a round of applause to Lorenzo Poe for his effort. Harriet Adair, this is the end of her 47th year. Harriet has served literally, she tells me, in almost every position in the District. And I am proud to know- Uh, and I am proud to, to know Harriet. She has a, she has a knowledge of the history of this district like no one else and has advised me on numerous occasions, uh, based on the history of, of the district, and it's been very helpful. Uh, Harriet, uh, they were both honored last night at a really wonderful cer- uh, celebration and some of us were there. And there's not enough superlatives for, for me to even come close to, um, what was said to them and about them last night. These are people that have dedicated their professional lives to helping other people, to helping kids, and I just am very, uh, proud to know them and ask that everyone give them a round of applause.
I thank the district and the city and this community for giving me an opportunity to serve. All my life, all my professional life, really has been about giving back to a community and kids who often, in the public's mind, were disposable. And so, some voice, someone, needed to stand up for those kids and communities. This district and the city has given me an opportunity to do those things professionally that lined up my passion, so I thank each and every one of you. As I said last time I was here, I commend you for your board service. I know how difficult it is, so let me thank you. And I also want to say to Bob, thank you for stepping into a very difficult situation and bringing some stability and hope back to this district. So, thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll be around.
I don't have much to add after what my colleague has said, uh, who actually I've known most of my life. And I will say to you that all of the goodness that you see in me or all of the praise that was reaped on me, I want to remind all of you that I'm a product of the Portland Public Schools. I grew up in Portland Public Schools, went to Vestal Grade School, Madison High School. My family taught in Portland Public Schools, and I always have wanted to be remembered as. The work that I did helped make Portland Public Schools better for all of the students that are there. This has been a wonderful experience. I'm not going anywhere worse, still here, a part of the community, and I want to say thank you very much for 47 years where I have felt that I have been able to do good things for all of these students, good things for all of the staff that I've touched, and good things for the community at large. It has been a true honor, and thank you so much, and thank you, Bob.
Uh, it makes, it makes my 38 years look pretty short by comparison. Uh, I'd like to take a moment and introduce the new general counsel. Uh, Jim Harris is back there. Jim, would you wa- wave your hand? And Jim comes to us. Jim comes to us by way of Pittsburgh, where he was the, uh, general counsel for the Housing Authority. Uh, he has been now onboard for about a week and is digging into things very deeply, and we're thrilled to have him. So, uh, thank you, Jim, for that. Um, I would like to, uh, move on and I have a...
What school you from?
HHS.
See you next week!
May take, can I take just a minute? A lot of them, excellent. Uh, I'd also like to take a moment and introduce Sharon Reese, and Sharon, would you raise your hand, please? Sharon is filling in as our personnel HR person, and we're thrilled to have her as well. Uh, and I've had several conversations with her already, and I'm really thrilled that she's here with us. So, thank you, Sharon, for filling in. Uh, I'd like to take a few minutes tonight and, um, you know, since this is the last, uh, public board meeting, uh, and, and just have sort of my comments for the year, so I ask that you bear with me. I want to take a few moments to thank you, the board, for this opportunity to have been the interim superintendent of Portland Public Schools. Beyond family, my life's mission has to make, been make a positive difference in the lives of our youth. To have had these short 10 months to employ one more time the skills developed over my 37 years as an educator and in the service of so many has been an honor, and I am profoundly grateful for it. I also want to thank staff. PPS operates in a bright media and public spotlight that is often focused on where we fall short. What is too often missed are the literally thousands more instances where staff have excelled and students have been served well. PPS has wonderful teachers, administrators, and support staff. I am proud of these people and proud to have served with them. This has been a challenging year of transition for Portland Public Schools, but it's also been a year in which we made significant progress. While it is true that more remains to be done so that PPS can excel in the service to all students, we have accomplished a great deal in a very short period of time. I believe the future of Portland Public Schools holds great promise, and I will share some ideas about how to attain that promise in my, at later in my remarks. Many, many want to view accomplishments as individual. I guess it's part of our culture. However, most accomplishments are not. Most accomplishments require many people working together. Sometimes, as in the case of the recent passage of our bond, it requires the collective effort of the board, staff, students, parents, and the community. In short, all of us. There is power and synergy and real teamwork. There is power and synergy and real teamwork, and that is what is required for excellence. In that vein, I would like to take a few moments and point to a few of this year's accomplishments. First, work on the 2012 bond has progressed nicely. The second of four stages of construction is nearing completion at Roosevelt High School. Franklin High School remodeling is nearing completion, as is construction at Fabian School. All are beautiful, state-of-the-art facilities that will serve generations of students. All are on schedule for completion. All are within budget. And recently, ground was broken at Grant for the incredible modernization work that's, that will be done there. Second, significant work is taking place toward resolving the health and safety issues that emerged so prominently last year. All water fixtures have been tested, problem areas have been identified, and contractors are being retained for significant work that is planned for the summer. Work is underway to address lead paint safety issues. A lot of that happened last summer, but it's ongoing, and additional work will, will continue. PPS is also aggressively addressing radon and asbestos problem areas. Of course, these issues, including seismic concerns, are addressed in the school modernization construction projects. Third, the three-to-PHD work with Concordia University, Trillium Family Services, Kaiser Permanente, and PPS has progressed and is nearing completion. The new Fabian School again will open this fall and will provide wraparound services for families of students who attend the school. Additionally, as part of the partnership, Concordia University will be able to educate their students on-site. This will provide Fabian with additional resources in the district with a cadre of well-trained teachers. Four, in May, the historic 2017 bond for $790 million was passed and by an overwhelming majority of over 66 percent. The bond will provide for the modernization of Madison, Lincoln, Benson High Schools, as well as construction of a new facility for Kellogg Middle School. It will also allow, along with ongoing maintenance funds, for us to resolve many of our significant health and safety issues at schools across our district. This was a clear message from our voters, that they see the need for this work and that they have the confidence in Portland Public Schools to do it well. Fifth, equity work is a part of the fabric and soul of Portland Public Schools. In May, the Office of Equity and Partnership presented to you a report demonstrating that equity work has permeated every corner of the district, every corner. We know that for equity work to have full effect of closing the achievement gap, it must be ongoing, and PPS is committed to that end. That said, PPS is a national model that others look for, look to follow in terms of how we initiated this work. Six, recently, you passed a 2017-18 operating budget of over $617 million. This was a difficult budget because it included reduction of $18 million. However, it is a solid budget because it was true to the budget goals you set in providing for student achievement, closing the achievement gap, and providing for student health and safety. Additionally, significant funds were redirected from central administration, uh, reorganization to more effectively meet the needs of di- of the district. Number seven, the central office was reorganized to be more efficient and effective. For example, in 2015-16, there were 13 direct reports to the superintendent. Now, there are eight. Further reorganization recommendations for the 2017-18 year have been completed, which, if implemented, will reduce direct reports to the superintendent to five. Eight, middle-level education, middle-level work has been substantial. A middle-level framework has been developed, and implementation planning under, is underway for the opening of Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights Middle Schools in 2018-19. The middle-level framework will also be used as a template to assess and improve district-wide middle-level education. I believe it has application well beyond PPS. It most certainly is being used in the implementation planning of, uh, Harriet Tubman and Roseway Heights Middle Schools. Nine, in December, you passed a resolution that initiated the implementation of a salary schedule for non-represented staff. Development of this comprehensive salary schedule was difficult, yet very important. There was considerable inconsistency in the former schedule, and many staff were not being paid at market levels. This was one of the problems we have faced in competing for quality staff. Ten, commencing with the 2015-16 year last year, there has been significant turnover in key central office personnel. While this is a situation that remains critical, we have added some key personnel. Examples include our communications department, which has added staff and is clearly on the rebound. Additionally, our new general counsel, uh, Jim Harris, is with us this evening, as I mentioned. Eleven, comprehensive plans developed for several of our struggling schools have been largely effective. These plans were developed with, among others, the involvement of, uh, of the PAT, central office administrators and the build, and building principals and others. The plans and processes may be used as a template should other schools face similar issues in the future. Twelve, a workflow plan was developed to organize and track all major district-level work. It has since been updated twice. You will be receiving a second update at the work session next week. In addition to these accomplishments, there are too many others that have taken place this year, both at the district and school levels, to recount. On any given day, our teachers, principals, school support staff, and central office staff might have to respond to an event that is disruptive or threatens student safety. Two examples illustrate the critical nature of our response. First, we lost nine days to snow and ice this year. Just imagine, if you will for a moment, all of the immediate logistics, planning, and actions that occurred at every level, at every school, and in central office during those days to protect our students and families. Second, a gas line broke in North Portland this year, and we had to evacuate all schools, or, I'm sorry, all the students from one school immediately. We did that successfully. Again, consider the immediate logistics and planning and actions that were entailed in that effort. Finally, and most importantly, our students grew and thrived this year, and thousands graduated at increasingly higher rates and at increasingly higher rates over the past several years. PPS is a district where incredible things happen, but we all know that much remains to be done if we want to realize our full potential. For example, we need to make central administration as effective as possible in support of schools and students. Looking forward, here are some things I think about and ask you to consider. Will PPS become a highly functioning school district rather than a district of schools? More importantly, will it be that, become that district, a lighthouse district where graduation rates far exceed state standards and where students are highly successful, irrespective of their race, religion, ethnicity, national origin, sexual, sexual preference, or socioeconomic status? I would encourage you to aspire to goals of this nature. Dream big, then create a plan to get there. Working together, we can attain, you can attain, more than you might imagine. I want to talk for just a moment about some of the assets of Portland Public Schools that will help you get there. First, we have an amazing and wonderfully diverse population of students. I'm always proud when I'm among them. This is a profound strength and an opportunity for students learning in an ever-shrinking world where our success will depend upon our ability and theirs to work with others. While examples of this strength abound, nothing illustrates it better than the International Youth Leadership Conference we hold each fall. Second, PPS has dedicated parents and a dedicated community who individually and collectively believe in public education and are, want our schools to excel. Nothing illustrates this point better than the fact that most students in Portland go to public schools. And the passage of the 2012-17 bonds is further proof of that support. Third, PPS has outstanding educators and support staff clearly dedicated to doing the right thing for students. That said, your administration, particularly your central administration, remains fragile with too few individuals trying to do too many things, and it is not sustainable. Excellence is not easily won, but it is absolutely achievable, and I can think of no urban district that is better situated to achieve it than Portland Public Schools. None. To that end, I submit the following suggestions about where such a journey might begin. Excellence, particularly in organizations, does not occur without teamwork, absolutely does not occur, and teamwork must start and be perpetuated from the top. Your power as board members, your power as board members, is through your work as the board of the whole. The alternative approach will not win you the excellence you seek. Excellence will also not occur without extending leadership at executive levels. Please consider how you, as a board of the whole, and as individual members, can create conditions that will attract and retain the most gifted leaders so that they will help you realize the course you will set. Without them, you will not be successful. Again, and I say this from the heart, thank you for this opportunity. I'm grateful.
So, Bob, thank you. We're, we're grateful to you as a board. Um, we have a token or two to, to show that. Um, but I just personally want to say, uh, that you've done just a very, very incredible job. You came in advertised as a smoke jumper. You didn't let us down. You, uh, you helped bring stability. You helped bring support to the staff, which was very needed. Um, your list of accomplishments, uh, with the board, I think speaks for itself, um, and, uh, I know that you've got, you got into the, uh, beginning of the reorganization and are, are pointing ways to go forward. Um, and most of all, you provided leadership. So, I'd just like to say thank you very much for that. Yeah, anybody else want to say anything before we...
You know, my personal, um, thank you also, as I said in, um, in your card, I think that this job, I mean, we all knew what a challenge it was going to be, and it took a lot of courage, um, to come and face what our issues are. You provided, you know, really that leadership, but the motivation. I mean, you treated, uh, this job as, I mean, the import, gave it the importance that it is, but also gave the respect that our staff deserves and gave us the ability to, to really come together this year to look at doing some important reorganization that you've mentioned there. We've had a lot of, um, successes. While we have challenges ahead, we're well on our way, and I thank your leadership for helping us to, you know, kind of steer us in our direction that we need to go in. Don't be a stranger, I'm gonna miss you, and you well deserve this retirement.
This is number three for me. So, I'm re- re- retired three times.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll Photoshop Steve, uh, in the hospital and Amy out of La Crosse Field.
Thank you for that wonderful token.
So, just so, um, everyone knows, the inscription reads, "With appreciation for interim superintendent Bob McCain for your service to Portland Public Schools and its students, staff, and community." And we have not only this, Bob, but also there's some little retirement gifts in here. And, and actually, there are three, so you can use one for each one.
Okay, uh, tonight, we will receive our fourth bond performance audit. Bob, would you like to introduce... Bob, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes. Bill Hirsch and Dick Tracy are here this evening to present a summary of their fourth annual performance audit of the 2012 School Building Improvement Bond Program. I'd like to ask Mr. Tracy and Mr. Hirsch to present the audit.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. That's not going to work.
It's not going to work today?
Yeah.
All right. So we had a PowerPoint, but we can talk you through it.
Well, there you go.
Oh, here it is. Great. So I'm Bill Hirsch, and this is Dick Tracy, and we met most of you last year where we did our third annual performance audit, so this is the fourth and last one in our contract.
So just in terms of some quick background, this year, we not only looked at the program over the past year, but we tried to look at a -- overall, we tried to look at an assessment of the four-year program to provide a little more context of what's happened over the last four years. We look, focus on the scope of the projects, whether they were done, whether they were done on schedule and when they were done on budget. That was kind of our focus. And as this report, like our other reports, includes a number of recommendations to reduce risk and improve controls and overall, hopefully, improve performance of the bond program. As you already heard and as you already talked about, the last, the 2012 bond program is reaching conclusion. Three of the large projects will be done by the end of the summer, as you know. Grant High School will begin construction this summer as well. Most of the summer improvements projects have been completed, and planning has been completed, master planning for Lincoln and Benson and Madison. So that overall is the background, and then get into the audit results for this year's report.
So the first topic, which is, has to do with schedule, and we also address scope. The major projects, as promised in the ballot measure, should complete in time for school openings. Roosevelt, Franklin, and Fabian will complete this summer, and by that is meant substantial completion. They can be used. There's going to be some additional groundwork and some pickup work, and Roosevelt has a slight scheduled phase to go, and there is the CTE space yet to build there. Grant is scheduled for completion in the summer of 2019. Fifty-one of the schools, this is the non-major high schools that are receiving work under this program in Fabian. Fifty-one other schools have received various improvements, such as seismic upgrades, updated science classrooms, and quite a bit of roofing work. Ten schools that were part of the original potential list for modernization work will not receive work at this time due to budget constraints, so they have been deferred. Projects have an excellent safety record. The program as a whole is at risk of completing over budget, and there's several elements to this. We address this quite a bit in our report. Franklin and Roosevelt have experienced significant cost increases, and we go into the specifics again in the report. Grant is estimated at a final cost which exceeds current available resources, and that number, as of approximately March 1st, was about $23 million. Several factors have contributed to the cost increase. One significant factor is that the high schools are bigger. Originally, there was going to be 1,500 capacity at Franklin and Grant and 1,200 students at Roosevelt, and all of those numbers have been increased, including the potential to increase Roosevelt to even 1,700 students in the future, so the core is larger. Escalation has been very high. When the program was begun, the OSM estimated that inflation might be as high as approximately 3%, just under that number. Industry-wide escalation has run about 5%, and the district has received even higher costs than that. And we address that in our report as well. And then there have been very expensive change orders at Roosevelt and Fabian, approximately $30 million.
Franklin.
Franklin. Oh, yeah, that's correct. I apologize for that.
One of the things we've done over the past four years is look at program management systems, processes, how they go about running the bond program. And we have found a number of strengths in this program, and I'd like to talk about those. Then I'd like to talk about where we find there are opportunities still for improvement. In the strength side, we believe the blended organizational structure that they put together for the program, representatives from finance and from accounting and for purchasing and communications, and FAM and OSM working together as a blended group, was an effective way to manage the program. It provided independence, it provided expertise, and that seems to have been a very strong program management approach. The financial accounting, the invoice reviews, the accountability, the approval processes for finances and payments is strong. We feel that they were timely, they were accurate. We didn't find any bond spending that was not authorized, and it was appropriately done under the bond. We think the purchasing systems have led to fair and impartial vendor selection. They followed, for the most part, according to state law. There were a few things in terms of selection here and there where we recommended some changes, some tightening of some contract language, and that was all concurred with by purchasing and implemented in recommendations in prior years. We also think they have strong project management software. The E-Builder system works very well. It takes a little bit to get up and running on it, but it's been a very effective system for them. It's a project management system. Internal, external, internal and external reporting has been, we feel excellent. The benchmarks report, the annual reports to the, monthly reports to the board, quarterly reports to the VAC have also been a strong management system, we believe. And also a number of program policies and procedures that are working well, that will help them as we move forward into a new bond program. There are also some other opportunities for improvement. Specifically, I'll mention four. We think there's stronger management of the CMGC contracts could hold firms more accountable for the GMP. That's the guaranteed maximum price. Those have been exceeded, both for Roosevelt and for Franklin. We think there are ways of tightening that language and coming up with better systems so that we can hold the CMGC firms accountable for that target price. We could think there's ways of controlling staff turnover. There was a lot of turnover in executive staff and in project management staff. There are certainly risks when you have executive management and high-level individuals turnover. They were able to handle those risks, but one of the ways we had to do that is rely on Hury, our consultant, our program management consultant. Fortunately, they were there. It also means we spent more money because they're more expensive than employees. We could also continue to upgrade and improve our policies and procedures. In particular, something called a project team management plan, which was not conducted for any of the projects. That's a very important policy that the OSM identified but never carried out. We hope that would be something they would do in the next bond, in a more consistent way, complete way. And also, holding architects and CMG firms more accountable for meeting milestones. Oftentimes, there was, even though the schedule is on track, the actual, there were delays in bidding, there was delays in getting a GMP targeted, and that probably impacted a little bit on the costs of consultants and subconsultants. In terms of the goals for equity, the district's equity in purchasing and contracting, the goals for equity are nearly met. In terms of the percent of invoices that are paid to MWE, ESB firms, they've averaged 14% over the past two years. Now, that's short of the 18% aspirational goals, but it's much better than it was earlier in the four-year program, so they've made some improvements in that area. Over 19,000 students participated in some way in the bond program, either career fairs, internships, job shadowing, other kinds of activities that give students an opportunity to see what this business is like. And also, 25% of all the labor hours are performed by minority or female registered apprentices, which is part of also the goals in the equity program. So the equity goals get pretty high marks as the program's ending, this, the 2012 program is ending.
In the past, this year, we have 15 recommendations. In the past, we had more recommendations, and the board asked us, I believe it was two years ago, to prioritize. And so what we did last year, and what we're doing this year, is we're listing, in this process right now, five key recommendations. The number one is that before any significant program is added, and the case in point for the bond that is just completing now or nearly complete, was the addition of quite a bit of square footage and student capacity at the high schools. One of the consequences of that is considerably more cost. And then, and part of that then is also the, right now, the deferral of 10 projects on the improvement list because there simply is not enough money at this point anticipated to complete the program. So in the future, before additional scope is added, and it's certainly appropriate to add it if it's important, is to ensure that there's sufficient budget and understand the consequences. Two, and Dick talked about this, in management of the CMGC contracts, we've made recommendations that should help the district to have firmer guaranteed maximum prices, to have the true guarantee there. We also are recommending that the district comply with district policy and state rule insofar as how amendments and changes are done to CMGC contracts. A fourth important recommendation is to reach out more in additional ways to the contracting community, that's both general contractors and subcontractors, to identify ways to make OSM projects more attractive for bidding. There's a perception now by OSM that some general contractors and some subcontractors are choosing not to work on OSM projects. And then our final key recommendation is that the district continue to work, potentially with HR, to identify ways to create a greater amount of career growth within OSM, to have the opportunity for what are now the project coordinated positions to be able to move up to be project managers in the event of turnover. We're also recommending that promotional opportunities be increased within the department. We make 10 additional recommendations, and they're all in the report. To date, OSM has acted on 57 of our 77 past recommendations, and is still, so that's approximately 75% complete, and is still working on 14 others. The district's provided a management response that's included within our report, and as of yesterday morning, the back, the bond accountability committee has not provided a written comment on the audit report. So that completes our presentation of the board. The actual report will be on the bond website. I believe it will be posted in the near future. So we're open to any questions?
Thank you very much. Board members, questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you both for your hard work over the years. This is my last time to have an opportunity to talk to you, so I'm going to do that. I just wanted to comment on, I think it was your first thing about the size of the schools being increased, and I think I'm the only one here who was on the board at that time. Were you? Were you? Anyway. And I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just want to be clear for the public that at the time, we did do that, we did take under consideration the things that you were talking about. And at the time, we thought that we would have enough money. We had a bond premium, I think $50-something million worth of bond premium coming in. We knew that we were going to have, we felt we were going to have money, given the way things were going at the time, unfortunately. Or maybe fortunately for the city, things are going much better, and it costs a lot more to build now, and the escalation's gone up, and as a result, we are in a difficult spot. But the alternative would have been opening schools that were too small, that would not have enough room for all of our students. So we really, I don't think, had much choice, and at the time, I think it was responsible action on the part of the board to increase the size of those schools. And we did take into consideration the things that you were talking about. So thanks.
Thanks for clarifying that.
So, thank you very much. The work that you've done throughout the bond has been, it was part of continual improvement, and it's very, very helpful, so appreciate it. I guess I would like your comment on the management response. I mean, you did read it, and is it SaaS factory to you, given what you've given your report?
Well, management has said that they concur with all of our recommendations, or in some cases, they're already complete. So that shows the willingness to improve.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I think it's always been that way, hasn't it? It's been pretty --
Mostly so. Last year, there were several instances where staff did not concur. It wasn't so much with what we found, it was about how to go about fixing it. We had focused more on, at the systems level, and they felt in some cases it was instances of compliance.
Right. The point being, staff is listening to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
There has only been a few instances of pure non-concur in the four years that we've done the work.
That's amazing, that they will all disagree. So little.
Yes. It's pretty good.
It's good.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
For everything you do.
For your work.
You're welcome.
And best wishes on --
Retirement?
Well, yes, that, and --
The new bond.
And the new bond.
The new bond.
All right. So we're going to hear from the bond accountability committee, and Kevin and Louis, you want to Welcome back.
Chair Kurla, board members, Superintendent McCain. We are back to report on our quarterly, regular report. The BAC met as long ago as April 18 this year. For a number of reasons, it's taken a little while to get here. So we're going to try to not, we're going to try to avoid giving you a whole lot of old data that has been overtaken. So we'll do our best, at least. One thing that was, I did want to comment on from our meeting, we heard public comment from a subcontractor from one of the major projects, and he raised some serious questions about a couple of things. One, specific site security protocols, and he had some good suggestions, as well as maybe abroad, on a broader basis, the inclusion of certified businesses and appropriate accountability. And we committed to work with staff to be sure that the lessons are learned from not just his experience, but all the current projects for the remaining 2012 work as well as the new bond. We also met with staff on June 7th for an update on the construction progress, since that's coming to a conclusion, and also for an initial briefing on the scope of the 2017 bond, so we could start to get our arms around that a little bit. At this time, as you know, PPS staff is managing the following work: completion of construction, lease phase two at Roosevelt High School, completion of construction at Franklin, completion of construction at Fabian, subcontractor buyout and development of the GMP for Grant High School, and close out on some IP 2016 work. Now, that level of activity is reduced from the last year or two, but the reason I wanted to list them off is this is still a significant amount of work that's ongoing, and I think sometimes we kind of take it for granted that we're over the peak, therefore, everything's easy from this point. And of course, layered on top of that is commencing now with the 2017 bond. So major challenges. So, major challenges. The, the two thousand and twelve bond program now stands at five hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, of which, as of April one, three hundred and forty-four million had been spent, sixty-two percent. We share some of the concerns that I just heard from Bill and Dick. As you know, I think maybe a little bit of a broken record. We've been concerned for some time about the level of contingencies, reserves, et cetera. And that continues to be the case. There are significant challenges ongoing as we speak at Grant High School, and they're working through those. So, we don't have a conclusion, but that's where the major risk exists at this point. We do also expect, as you know, to get some additional bond premium from the remaining sale for the two thousand and twelve bond. Staff is also continuing to work on the cost ramifications of the winter issues we have. And that may have been done now, I haven't heard if it has, but nevertheless, there are implications to that. Substantial risks, though, still exist in the program. We're still closing out three major, major projects. And as I said, Grant High School, we're just getting going.
With the project budgets and schedules, significant construction project, construction progress has been made in the past few months. And some of the effects of this winter's weather events have been mitigated. Fabian, Franklin, and the second phase of Roosevelt will all be opening up for this school year. The logistic challenges during the summer, during this summer, arising from the opening of three schools, plus relocating Grant to Marshall during the same window, are all significant, and will put great stress on the Portland Public Schools staff. And therefore, patience will be required of school staff and administrators during this period. As far as substantial completion, the ones that are scheduled are Franklin, the end of June, with the exception of their fields, which will happen in mid-July. Fabian, also completion at the end of June, with the exception of their fields. And those, those fields were delayed due to weather. You could not, you just couldn't plant at the time. And Roosevelt will be substantially complete at the end of July. And you'll recall that plan always called for much of the site work to become phase three, and to be completed after the school opens. Now, project budgets continue to be pressured. And the staff has continued to qualify those costs related to the weather delays and other changes. The largest exposure, as you've been hearing, is Grant High School going forward, since that contract price is still being developed. The construction market as a whole is, if anything, is even more stretched now than it has been in recent years. And that is resulting in the challenges on every element of the budget. The IP seventeen work is, the design has been complete. But it, as well as IP eighteen and nineteen, will be, are entirely dependent upon the availability of budget.
We're continuing to track the equity piece of the program, as you know. Staff gave us good reports on student involvement. One caution I'd give you when you see the, the balance scorecard, it currently, or at least in April, showed red for two thousand and seventeen. Recall, though, that that's tracked on an annual basis, not a school year basis. So, the summer activities will start to flip that back to be, to be green. As Dick mentioned a few minutes ago, employment of apprentices is well ahead of the goal. Certified business involvement is challenging, remains challenging, but also remains a priority. And we've asked staff for a report on the efforts that were made by the contractors on Roosevelt and Franklin, so that we can learn lessons from those activities, particularly as their results were so different between those two schools. So, we wanna know why, and we wanna take those lessons forward to Grant High School, where we think the results are gonna be much better, but also on to two thousand and seven, seventeen bond.
With safety, Fabian has experienced his first recordable accident, but thankfully, it was minor. And the person that was involved in it returned to work the next day. There were no accidents at any of the other sites during this quarter. And overall, the program's safety record remains outstanding. The audit, as you just heard from the auditors, they have commenced and completed their review of expenditures for the Franklin Roosevelt contract, which is the standard practice for CMGC contracts, and we definitely support the process. The final report was presented. However, unlike previous years, the bond accountability committee had not yet had the opportunity to review the report. But we'll certainly work with staff on any recommendations, and we'll track the progress accordingly. In addition to that, I understand that RFP for the next phase of the performance audit is currently under development, and will be issued shortly.
On top of the two thousand and twelve bond, we now have the two thousand and seventeen bond happily to be, to be looking at. As I said, we met with staff on June seventh for an initial briefing on the scope. And we committed at our next regular meeting in July to give some serious consideration about how we should organize ourselves for this additional oversight. It's, it's, at least for a couple of years here, there's a lot of overlap. And we wanna make sure that we can handle that appropriately. We'll also quiz staff, frankly, about how they are gonna do that. I've already mentioned, two thousand and twelve bond this summer is very, very busy. And now, we've got planning for the two thousand and seventeen as well. And we need to know how that's gonna transpire. Nevertheless, it's an exciting time. Three schools will be open. When did that last happen in Portland Public? Not, not even Bob remembers, you see.
Nineteen fifty, maybe?
Nineteen forty.
Nineteen forty something?
Yeah, right.
Late forties.
I, I know many of you have toured the schools, and I think you probably agree with me that the, the staff and students and taxpayers will be very happy with the end products. And it'll make a difference in the lives of those students. Finally, I'd like to express appreciation to the outgoing board members, particularly Director Knowles, who was the first board liaison to the BAC back in two thousand and twelve, thirteen. And I think you've sat on two design activ, uh, design advisory groups, and-
Three.
Three. Excuse, that's right. I just remembered the other one. Chair Kerler, of course, has, the day you were elected, I think you called me and started with a series of questions. And you haven't really stopped doing that, so that's great. We really appreciate it. And Director Buell, of course, has been a great advocate for the teacher's voice in the design of these schools. So, thank you. And we'll be happy to take questions.
Board members, questions, comments?
I would just say thank you to both of you, and please extend my thanks to the rest of the committee. It's been a pleasure working with you, and particularly because of your, the skills and the knowledge that you all bring through your professional positions. I really think that it was a, it's been wonderful to have someone with so much expertise, a group with so much expertise to help us through these things. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would just echo those thanks. Kevin, I think I told you at the, on election night, that you and your group deserve huge credit for giving the public the assurances that they need, that, that the district is proceeding in, in a professional, accountable way. And the, the oversight and the communication that your group gives is, is very, very important to us. And I'm, I'm glad you're gonna be considering the, the two seventeen bond. I mean, what I would like to see is, is essentially, what I'm hearing, you're gonna be doing, which is evaluating what worked in terms of your group, what didn't work, what can we do better, and bring that conversation to the, back to the board, and proceed accordingly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jerry and Dan. Yeah. Office, quarterly report from the Office of School Modernization. Good evening, board members, and to our two outgoing, thank you very much. The last eighteen months working with you has been a pleasure, and I've enjoyed serving you. Jerry Vincent, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. I have with me Dan Young, our Senior Director for the Office of School Modernization. I wanna walk you through our quarterly report, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dan here.
Okay, I'm gonna run through some program and some project details. If you guys have any questions, obviously, please feel free to stop me at any time. We're entering what is going to be a very busy summer. We're four and a half years into the two thousand and twelve capital program. The current budget is just over five hundred and sixty million. We've expended over three hundred and sixty million, and about half of that we've done in the last twelve months alone. The projects have worked over a million man-hours to date, and we've had only a handful of minor safety incidents. So, we are very happy about that fact. And to give a little perspective on the amount of work that's being managed right now, OSM averages roughly twelve million dollars of work a month that we put into the buildings, and we have a staff of seventeen. So, we have a very, a lot of very hard workers down in OSM. I'm happy to report, all projects are on schedule to open in August as planned. Plans are in place for construction completion, permit sign-off, installing new furniture and equipment, moving staff materials, and completing trainings with building and maintenance staff, with building and maintenance staff. We do have some grand openings that'll be coming up, so I wanted to show you what those are. We just completed the groundbreaking at Grant. We have three of the grand openings here towards the end of August and beginning of September. And then Roosevelt is towards the, excuse me, yeah, Roosevelt is towards the end of September. This is a recent aerial photo of Franklin High School. You can see that the field and track are nearing completion. The auditorium and black box, they are complete, and they're just being set up right now. The old auditorium, which is now the new media center, that is almost complete as well. We've started new equipment trainings for the maintenance staff already, already completing that. Final complete, final cleanings are underway in that building. It's roughly ninety percent furnished already. So, we're moving along very well at Franklin. All the work will be done in the next few weeks, with a couple of exceptions. We have some grandstand work, and we have a covered walkway that has solar panels on top. It looks like that is gonna carry over into fall. We're working on minimizing any impacts that would be to students or staff. Here's just a couple photos of Franklin. You'll see Ben is back home in his house, and some work on the outside, completing the auditorium entrance, the dance class, and then a view from the, from the football field. So, the field is complete. We're still working on the track. Here is a recent overhead from Roosevelt. This is going to change very dramatically very soon, so the next one is gonna look a lot different than this. Roosevelt has the busiest summer ahead, largely in part to, the main building was occupied with students twelve months ago. And fourteen months from that point in time, we're gonna have a completely renovated nineteen twenty-one historic building for students. Site fencing is now up for phase three, which is our site work. Demolition has already begun on the old cafeteria building, the baseball field. Excavation work has begun also. Inside the building is largely flooring, ceilings, and finishes that are going on right now. And there will be still some work going on in the buildings come fall, pretty minor work. That'll be happening in the building, some punch of stuff, and there are some certain areas where we need to finish up. So, there won't be much impacts to staff and students there. But of course, our phase three, which is the vast majority of our site work, will continue almost until the end of the calendar year.
Can you highlight the three that are coming down? We, um, does that, did it kick in?
It's working.
Okay. It should be that top one. There you go.
Right here. We have the old library building. That will be coming down. This building as well, that's what they're working on actually today. And our tenplex, which are portable units, they're being moved out right now. We actually sold those units. And then these two over here are keeping, they're gonna be repurposed and used elsewhere. Some interior photos of Roosevelt. A lot of work still going on there, primarily finish work and drywall work and things like that. And so, once we get into those phases, we can pick up speed pretty quick. So, everything is still looking good out at Roosevelt. Here is an aerial photo of Grant. This shows what our summer plans on, some plans are. Grant Construction actually began today, so they are mobilized. They are out there working today. Lots and lots of moving is going on. We had three full-size eighteen-wheel trucks out there that we were loading up. We continue to negotiate the, the GMP with the contractor out there, and we're also continuing to finish the construction drawings and the permitting process. We have a phased permitting process. So, we've pulled some permits. We've begun construction. We'll get the, the full permits later on in the process. We've also begun work at Marshall to prepare for students, and we'll be moving the staff out of Marshall as we speak also. And there'll be lots more to come on Grant in the next coming months and years. Fabian, here's a recent aerial photo. Fabian will be substantially complete this week. We're gonna have a few lingering things that we need to finish up over the next month or so, but we should, will take care of that without issue. Concordia and our partners will be occupying the building soon. The lease agreement is being reviewed tonight. The operating agreement will follow shortly thereafter. We have furniture coming in July. We'll start filling in the building. We're moving staff out of Tubman right now. The playground out front is complete. The bus loop is complete. The gym is also done. The field offices have left the site, so we've put our staff, the site staff are actually in the building. They're doing all their final cleanings right now. We still have some site work and some site improvement work out in the street. That's gonna be happening, but we will be ready for staff and students come August. There's some photos. You can see the, the playground out front is complete. We've got a very nice gym, and our solar panels up there. A couple other miscellaneous items. I think people may know that we received three state rehabilitation grants for a total of four point five million dollars. We got awarded those in April. Two of those, so three million dollars, are specific to Grant. Another one point five is for Lewis Elementary, and we will be completing that work next summer. This summer, we'll be completing the elevator at Cesar Chavez. We started that last summer. Put it on hold during the school year, and we'll be completing that here over this summer as well. And with all that going on, also, we're starting to plan for the two thousand and seventeen bond work. You will see work happening this summer, as we were briefed last week. You'll also see RFPs and other solicitation to go out for design services and construction services.
Are there state grants available on the two seventeen as well, that we're applying for?
Potentially. We'll have to look at what the options are. We have applied for other projects in the past that we did not get. Some of them is because of, the maximum right now is one point five million, the grant. And some of those projects are quite a bit more than that, so unless we have the funds to cover, we won't be applying for them. That said, they may actually increase that amount. We've been indicated, but we don't know that yet.
And then that's it. Any questions? Any other questions? Thank you. All right. Steve, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. So-
Can you hear me okay?
Yep. We're gonna consider a few resolutions that you've brought to us this evening, and-
Two.
So, I think we'll start with resolution five four eight zero, see if it, there's a, a motion in a second, and then we can discuss it. At which point-
Which one's which?
The five four eight zero is- The 5480 is a resolution to create a comprehensive professional development plan.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Rosen and seconded by Director Anthony to adopt Resolution 5480. Steve, you want to give us your explanation about this?
Yes, we talk a lot about giving ourselves with a clear direction and organizing well, and what this actually do forces to do that with our professional development. We're not sure what we're aiming for in our professional development. Not sure, are we aiming for PBIS? Are we aiming to do professional development around our, in school, in school, say, around multicultural education? Are we doing professional development around things like trauma-informed education? What are our goals and where are we going? And all this does is say that we should have a plan, a district-wide plan, and a plan at each school. I'd actually talked to the district, and it's a very good idea. I was under the impression that we were moving in that direction with Chris Russell, and I haven't had to bring it up again, but we have not gotten there, and this kind of just assures that we get it. It's a high priority, and then we get extremely important to our staff, and that people understand, and that we have an actual plan. We talk all the time, let's have a plan. This is really, in school, the goals where they're going in the professional development. It's not just kind of, well, this week we might do this, which gives, that's some school, but that's what it is. There's, that's what brought this about.
All right. Any discussion? Do you want to say something?
Sure.
Yeah.
I view this as a well-intentioned idea, and I spoke with Chris about this particular resolution, and he and I both share the same concern. You're about to go through a huge leadership transition, and I would encourage you to permit the new leadership team, and particularly the new superintendent, to work with the board to develop a strategic plan, and then from that would logically flow the staff development. So, I would not be supportive of this as a superintendent at this time.
Anybody else want to say anything?
I'd comment on that if I could, Tom.
I think Mike was about to say something, and then you can.
Let Steve go.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Well, what, I agree with Bob. Yeah, we should be, we should have this plan. They're not saying we shouldn't have the plan. What they're saying is, let's go a whole nother year without a plan. It's not that difficult for us to sit down and just say, for a school to say, here's our plan for the year. And then we can look, and people will know, and they'll know where they're going. To have no direction, which is where we basically are now, for a whole nother year is not a good idea. And, yeah, I agree with Bob, yeah, let's do it. But this says, let's do it, and let's at least get a plan for this year, and then we can work on a plan, a stronger one for the next year. No problem, but no plan is what we have, and no plan is not one.
Julie?
Hi, Steve. So, I hope you're feeling better. My comments are, again, to reiterate what Bob says, I think it's hard to know. As we're looking for leadership, I think we have to certainly develop a shared vision and a plan, and I think it's, I don't want to, I think it's important for us to think strategically in terms of a whole district, where the district is going rather than individual schools. So, I just think it's premature to say that we, just we have to give ourselves time with new leadership to really be looking at an overarching district vision, mission, agenda, and goals in order to develop professional, to think ahead about professional development plans. So, I think it's premature, given where we're at right now and looking for leadership.
All right. Mike?
Steve, I wanted to know if you would accept a friendly amendment, and that would be to, the plan would be completed October 1st, 2017, if we move that back to February 1st, Steve?
Yeah, my, sure, I'd accept that, but the whole idea is to get a plan in place of some sort for this year, which we don't have, again, and not a whole nother year with no idea where we're going on professional development, either in the district or in each school. So, yeah, if that's, if you go for it that way, but not the other way, sure. But it just is, it's something that needs to be done. For instance, what about trauma-informed? Are we going to teach our teachers how to deal with that this year? Well, who knows? Because we don't have any idea ourselves.
All right. So, and you can now read February 1, 2018, which I think does accommodate some of the principles that... Or not. Okay. So, any other discussion, then we'll take the vote. All right. All those in favor of Resolution 5480, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Resolution 5480 passes four to two. All right. Resolution 5481, to create a comprehensive ESL plan. Do I have a motion? Then moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Rosen. Steve, do you want to say anything on this one?
Yeah, just that this is the most critical educational problem we have in the district, and this plan forces us to address it. It's not under addressed for a long time, and it's a great, it's just saying, let's sit down and address this issue, and that's all. It just says, let's do it, and I'm up for doing it, making sure it gets done.
Okay. Comments?
So, my comment is, I am absolutely concerned about the achievement of our second language learners, and I think the appropriate place for this, and where we can discuss it in depth is on the teaching and learning, through the Teaching and Learning Committee, which I have planned to have this on the calendar in the fall to examine our, this year's ELPA data and progress, graduation rates of our English learners, grades, particularly high school grades, third-grade reading indicators, kind of the overall picture of where we're at, and then as well as look at the curriculum and the instruction that's happening, not just at the secondary level, but across the grades. So, yes, I think it deserves and it needs to be addressed, but I think teaching and learning is the appropriate place to do that.
Okay. So, if this resolution passes, can we, I mean, we can say, which would be the appropriate thing, is that it goes, that that work goes to the teaching and learning?
Well, perhaps, but it is not just saying to look at ESL achievement. This says an analysis of intensive English language instruction, so I'm not clear on what that means, I guess, and what the impact would be. So, I think that needs to be described by Director Buell.
Steve, did you hear that?
The intent is not to send it to teaching and learning. The intent is to have a broad, very comprehensive study done, the Teaching and Learning Committee, which I really like him on, meets once a month. I'm talking about getting something that's going at least weekly, at the very least, where we bring in professionals, we bring in our top ESL people, we bring in ESL people from the district. We actually do a comprehensive, really thorough study. And the point about the analysis is just, it makes sure that that gets looked at, and that needs to be looked at carefully, and it's just, that's all it needs, is that that is part of what we're looking at. So, this study is critical, and it needs to be done not by board members in that committee, but by really bringing in even maybe some outside professionals, so we really get a good look at it.
Right. But then, that work done by professional staff would get vetted, and just to be clear, would be vetted at the Teaching and Learning Committee.
It doesn't say that in here.
No, I know, but that's the way...
Whatever the board decides to do it, once it comes out.
Any other comments?
I have no comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this comment really goes to both of these proposals. While I appreciate the work that Director Buell is asking the district to do, I have several concerns about that. The first one being that here again, we have a resolution coming to the board that has not been through any kind of a committee or had any kind of in-depth discussion, and we're asked with just, I think I got this this afternoon, to look at this and to vote on it when we really haven't had the time to flush out any of the details that we should be doing, which is why we have a committee structure. And so, I can't, we did this last week too, I can't be supportive of something that has not had some discussion by other board members. We, in fact, are even missing a board member tonight. So, that's one. The second one is, I really feel that this kind of decision is something similar to what Bob was saying. I think it's a role for the new board to take on. I would hate to already start telling the new board from the grave what we want them to do. I think that it's important for them to have that opportunity with their superintendent to set their goals and their strategic vision and move forward in that way. So, I can't, I can't really be supportive of either one of these, and it's no comment on the validity of the ideas, it's just I don't believe that we should be acting in a way that is, we're not informed, and we're just doing something because it sounds good, and I can't go along with that.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
One, one very small comment, Tom.
Yep.
One very small comment.
Go ahead.
I first brought this before, I first brought this before the board, and within a month of me first being on the school board, which is over four years ago, so this has been an issue that I had out there for four years, and we've had lots of time to look at it. I just want to get it done before I get on the board.
Okay. I'm going to support this because I think it starts the conversation, and it's an important conversation, and the next board will have everything to do with it as it comes back and evolves. So, any other comments? All those in favor of Resolution 5481? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Steve, are you an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Resolution passes four to two. All right. Before we go into the business agenda, I know, Steve, you wanted to say a few farewell comments, and if anybody else wants to as well, you're more than welcome.
Do you want to do it now, Tom?
Go for it.
First of all, I want to thank Roseanne Powell and Karen Hughes, who did such great work and were so helpful to me on the school board. They are both kind and helpful and were wonderful. Second, I also, I want to thank three of our administrators, who treated me with particular respect, who listened well and often acted with intelligence and common sense, Yusef Awad, Antonio Lopez, and Chris Russell, who I wish well in his new endeavors. I also wish to thank the PAT people, particularly the two presidents, Glenn Sullivan and Suzanne Cohen. Their help was invaluable for making things better for children. I'm not going to list what I accomplished, much of which never made the newspaper, even came out of meetings, but I want to outline some of what we have left to do. We have two major problems. As a school district, we continue to make way too many decisions based on what makes our adults comfortable instead of what is best for children. Still failing to address many issues that can make things better if we would just admit we needed to change things. Secondly, we move way too slowly, taking years to do things which should take months, and months to do things that should take weeks, and weeks to do things that should take days. Instead of addressing problems in a timely manner, we often allow them to fester and expand. This, of course, is no longer true under Yusef Awad on the financial and facility side, and I am hopeful we will take the work there as a model and use it on the educational side of BBS. Here are some very important issues which we need to address yet. We need to continue to attack disparities in our schools by following through on establishing a foundational program with special programs intentionally layered on top. There is no good reason George Middle School should not be as good as the West Sylvan Middle School. Secondly, we need to reform our human resources department so it is truly a human resources department, not as it seems to have become, a data resources department. Our hiring processes are very weak, and we pay a great price for this. We could, for instance, settle our grievances, there's no reason to continue with the large number we have. Third, even in the face of overwhelming evidence, many key people in the district refuse to acknowledge and address the huge negative impact testing is playing in educating our children, as well as our continued misuse of things like Common Core and other corporate education approaches, which make teaching harder, not easier. Fourth, we need to straighten out our relationships with our fine community-based organizations and our equity work, so the benefits go to our children in our classrooms directly and not to some vague and less connected objectives. Five, we need to continue to strengthen and build those middle-grade programs which engage children in school, programs both during school and after school. And six, of course, we need to straighten out our ESL programs, for where we took a step tonight for those older children to winter school with little or no English skills by making sure they learn enough English fast enough so they can be successful in school. With a new school board coming, I am hopeful we can address all of these problems, and I particularly wish my replacement, Rita Moore, good luck. She is smart and a fine person, so I expect she will do great. I hope the new board is given a chance to do this, including by the social media critics who often act like bad journalists by personalizing and drawing conclusions without enough information to do so. I wrote once on social media that being on the school board was a hard job, and someone wrote back, a hard job? It looks like an impossible one to me. I had to tuffle with that. And thank you for all those out there who helped me through these years of trying to make things better. Thank you, Tom.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
And we're rooting for, get you out of the hospital. Anybody else want to say anything? No? The, well, we did have a little, Steve, in your absence, we had a, yeah, celebration of the retiring board members, so you were definitely thought of, and Bob made some very kind words about you, and I'd also just like to echo... And I'd also just like to echo, thanks Pam for your service of eight years, is incredible service on this board. So, thank you. Board members will now consider the business agenda. Are there any items anybody would like to pull? All right. Do I have a motion to second, a motion and second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Sparza Brown. Is who saying any public comment?
No.
All right. All those in favor of the business agenda, vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you an aye, Steve?
Are you an aye?
I haven't seen that agenda because everything got sent home instead of the hospital, so I'd have to abstain.
Okay. The business agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero with one abstention and the next regular meeting of the board will occur as the new board on July 11th and this meeting is adjourned.